Good evening, it is now 6:30 and I will call to order the Monday, January 9th, 2017, Burnsville Planning Commission. Commissioners, thanks for your time this evening. Staff, I appreciate your time. I appreciate everyone coming out tonight in a little bit of questionable weather this evening. The first item on our agenda this evening is actually the adoption of our agenda. Commissioners, is there any last-minute additions or changes to tonight's agenda? None from Commissioners? Staff, any changes?
No changes.
No changes from staff. Commissioners, at this point, I would stand for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benkey, second by Commissioner Walter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, and the motion carries. Five-zero. The second item this evening is approval of the minutes for the December 12th, 2016 Planning Commission. Commissioners, do you have any changes to the minutes from the previous meeting? Staff, the only thing I have, our background did say that, in reference to the North River Hills, that I had closed a public hearing and I actually did not.
Continued.
We continued it, so if you could make that change, I would appreciate it. Staff, did you have any other changes to the minutes?
No, sir.
Commissioners, with those changes, I would stand for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Singh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, and the motion carries. That brings us to our third item this evening, which is a continued public hearing. It's an application for the City of Burnsville for a conditional use permit amendment to allow a 99-foot-tall monopole tower with antenna in North River Hills. Ms. Garros is presenting for us this evening, and this is a continuation of our public hearing from our last meeting. We had some changes we needed to make to the notification list, and Ms. Garros, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the audience. The application before Planning Commission involves an application by the city to install a new 90-foot cell tower at North River Hills Park, in the vicinity of the park where the existing tennis courts are, which are in the northwestern part of the site. We did open the public hearing at your last meeting and went over in quite in detail with the Commissioners, the conditional use permit, and the plat to combine the various different properties into one lot. At that time, we requested the Planning Commission to continue the public hearing, and that was to allow us to publish for rezoning and also to amend the PUD zoning for two parcels, Outlots F and G. Outlot F is this bigger parcel here. Outlot G is a smaller parcel. Both of these properties are owned by the city. Both of these properties are in River Hills Park. There is really no change, no physical changes that are proposed for the parkland whatsoever. It's just that when we are plating the property and taking all of these various parcels and combining them into one lot, the legal description for the zoning, that PUD zoning, is not going to exist any longer. So we are recommending the, those two parcels, Outlots F and G, be rezoned from a park planned unit development to just park, and also to amend the 1972 planned unit development for Mill Pond to remove Outlots F and G from that PUD. In 1972, when that planned unit development was established, it was a much larger piece of property dealing with lands to the south of the park that are now developed with apartments, with townhomes, and some commercial as well. And in that early 1972 concept, one of the requirements was is that the north part of the land that the developer owned at that time be set aside for public open space. That's what ultimately happened, and that's when Outlot F and G were created later, when lands were formally subdivided, and then those were, those were given to the city for parkland. So there are no changes to anything within the Mill Pond development. Again, this is land, it'll, it is owned by the city, it'll continue to be owned by the city. It's developed right now with, there's a trail and open space for the majority of the piece. They will continue to stay there, and there are no other development plans or changes proposed for that area of the park. With that, the staff recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit amendment to allow the monopole tower, to approve the rezoning of Outlots F and G, Mill Pond Second Edition, to, from park and planned unit development to park, to amend the 1972 PUD, to remove Outlots F and G from that planned unit development, and then also to recommend approval of the preliminary plat of the one-lot subdivision of North River Hills Park as presented. With that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions of staff at this point in reference to this application? Nothing from Commissioners. Okay. This does require me to reopen the public hearing, so at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item in reference to the monopole that's being proposed for North River Hills Park. If you could, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Anyone wish to speak to, to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, your, your preference?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benkey.
If the Chair approves, I would love to make a motion.
Okay. Commissioner Levy, did you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. At our last meeting, I seem to recall, there was something about boundary alignment, there was some gap between the boundaries. I don't, how is that being addressed?
Commissioner Levy, for that, that will take a separate action that the city attorney is working with. That is in reference to, on the screen, there is a short, a gap in legal descriptions, and that has to be handled separately through quitclaim deed process and another process not associated with the plat. The city attorney is pursuing that. It does not need to be a condition of the plat, and it would not be something that would hold up approval of the plat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levy, any other questions?
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Benkey.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that the Planning Commission move approval, recommend to Plan, I'm sorry, Planning Commission recommend to City Council approval of the CUP amendment to allow the 99-foot-tall monopole tower with antenna, the rezoning of Outlots F and G, Mill Pond Second Edition from park PUD to park, the PUD amendment to remove Outlots F and G, Mill Pond Second, from the 1972 Mill Pond PUD, preliminary plat, and final plat, the one-lot subdivision as presented.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, and the motion carries. So this is an application from the city, so it will be, I think you said it will be in front of the City Council on the, the first meeting in February?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Deb.
Yes, this will go to the City Council on February 7th. And the reason that it's going in two meetings is that this is a city project, and at the same meeting, there are plans and specifications that will be approved at the same point. So our IT folks wanted everything to be on one meeting.
Thank you. That brings us to the, our, the fourth item on our agenda this evening, and this also is a public hearing. A public hearing application for Bereen Baptist Church for a conditional use permit amendment for a 26,409-square-foot church addition, including 1,100-seat worship space auditorium, variance, preliminary, and final plat of a two-lot subdivision of Bereen Baptist Edition located at 309 County Road 42 East. Ms. Garros is presenting this evening. Ms. Garros, you have the floor.
Thank you. The application before you this evening is complicated because we have a property that's, again, comprised of several different pieces of land that have never been formally subdivided, and we have the church, which has also a long history of various additions and whatnot. And there are different parts of the zoning and subdivision ordinance that apply for this application. What we would like to do this evening is to give the Planning Commission and the folks who are present here this evening an overview of the project and what's involved with the applications. At that point, we are recommending for the Planning Commission to open the public hearing and take public testimony, but then to table the application to a future meeting. The applicant would like to hold a second public open house meeting or neighborhood meeting to go over the various issues and questions and concerns that property owners have raised. Just for background, the applicant did have a neighborhood meeting or open house at the church back in September. They did mail out notices. There was only one person that actually ended up coming to that meeting, and in addition to that, the city held an open house last week, or excuse me, a neighborhood meeting last week on January 4th. And at that meeting, we had 17 folks attend, residents from the neighborhood surrounding Bereen Baptist Church, and there were a whole host of issues and concerns that came up. The majority of the issues really related to transportation, traffic, parking. There were also comments related to the large scale of the building addition proposed and the mass, and just how that does or does not fit within a residential neighborhood. The summary of the comments that were made at the meeting was provided to the Planning Commission along with a packet of information, so you do have that. Being that there were, the majority of issues that came up were related to transportation. At the open house, we did not have an engineer present that could speak to all of the questions and issues that came up with regard to transportation. So what we have suggested is to table this public hearing to allow time for the applicant and staff to meet with the property owners, to have the appropriate engineers, engineering staff available, so that they can talk about and address the issues that came up and explain what their findings are. There was a traffic study that was conducted for this project, and there's quite a bit of detailed information within that. The hope then, or what we anticipate then, is after that public meeting with the neighborhood to go back, take a look at the plans, to see what revisions, changes, alternatives are available, and then staff would republish the public hearing notice. We would resend out written notification of the next public hearing date for the Planning Commission meeting, in which this would be brought back for a second public hearing. With that, I'd like to just go over in general some of the items related to the application. In terms of the zoning ordinance and the various land use clearances that are needed, the church is, our religious institutions are a conditional use in the R1 single-family zoning district. So the primary application is for conditional use permit amendment to allow them to add on to the church and also to expand the parking lot, which I will show you in a few minutes. There is also a maximum height standard in the single-family zoning district of 30 feet. The application calls for the addition to be 42 feet tall, so in order to go above 30 feet, they do need a conditional use permit, and they can do that based on the ordinance with approval of a conditional use permit. Also to allow standing seam metal roof materials and metal exterior materials, which are proposed, they do match the existing roof that's out there, but as the Commission is aware, in the single-family zoning district, metal is, is one of those materials that requires a conditional use permit to be able to use it. And also, they are proposing a parking lot for part of the property, and the use is not specifically listed as a permitted or conditional use. In the R1 zone, those types of uses can be allowed, again, with a conditional use permit. Also, there are steep and very steep slopes on the property in various locations. To do any grading work in slopes between 18 and up to 40%, again, it can be done, but it requires a conditional use permit. And then also to allow alternative parking standards, which are based on the information and studies, the traffic study, et cetera, that has been submitted by the church, that also is something the ordinance allows with a conditional use permit. Just briefly for the audience, a conditional use permit is an application where the zoning ordinance in Burnsville lists out very specific uses that can be done in the zoning, different zoning districts, the commercial districts, residential, et cetera. What a conditional use permit is, it means that the use is permitted, but it's subject to review, in this case, formal review with the Planning Commission and public hearing, and then ultimately, the City Council makes decisions on all land use applications, and they would in this case as well. With a conditional use permit, what that means is that although the Council thought at the time they developed the zoning ordinance that religious institutions make sense within a residential area, and they can be done, they're aware that there are impacts that are associated with a church that are different than single-family homes. So the whole purpose of the conditional use permit is to take a look at what those impacts are that are different than a single-family neighborhood, and to work out in the application how to address those without having negative impacts to the adjacent properties. In addition to the conditional use permit, based on the plans submitted to date, there are a couple of variances that are needed, and these are deviations from the standards of the ordinance, and they are allowed if there can be a finding that there is, excuse me, that there is no hardship or practical difficulties with the application, then the Planning Commission and Council can make findings to support or to deny variance. The variances that would be needed for the application are, number one, to allow Lot 1 Block 1, which is, I will show you that parcel in a minute, to be developed with a parking lot with no principal building on the lot. We have dealt with this in other commercial applications. They are proposing to expand both the parking lot on the church site, and then across Plymouth Avenue to the west is also property owned by the church. They're proposing to construct a new parking lot on that currently vacant parcel. Second variance is to allow proposed Lot 1 Block 2 to have more than three driveways. Again, the standards of the R1 district are set up typically to apply to a single-family home. Generally, you do not want to see more than three driveways on a lot. There are five existing driveways, and an additional one is proposed. The last variance is to allow the existing monument sign, which is right at the corner of 145th Street and County Road 42, to have a zero setback, as opposed to a 20-foot setback from the north property line. The reason that this is needed is, in plating this property, Dakota County wants additional right-of-way to be dedicated from the applicant. The current sign does meet the setback standards, but once you take out an additional 15 feet that the county wants, at that point, we have a zero setback, and so that variance is, is brought in at this point as well. The last application is related to the preliminary and final plat. The subject site is made up of three different meets and bounds properties, none of which have been platted in the past. They are making application for a land use clearance application, and the city's ordinance does require, at those points, the property to be platted. So what the applicant is proposing to do is to formally subdivide or plat their property, a little over 17 acres, into two lots. The aerial photo gives you an overall picture of Bereen Church and the, kind of the adjacent properties. To the northeast is County Road 42, and then we have 145th Street. The lot to the north is another church, Good Shepherd Church. The applicant owns, in addition to the large parcel that the church and existing parking lot is on, they also own the parcel across or west of Plymouth Avenue. That's currently all wooded, it's undeveloped. There is an existing stormwater pond on the very north of that site, just south of 145th Street, and that was constructed way back in 2000 with the last expansion that the church made and the last conditional use permit. This is a picture looking at, looking basically from the southwest at the existing church, and what you'll see on the, on this part of the site, this is what was constructed in 2000. It's another assembly use, and that, the proposal then, is to basically build the addition onto the front of that. This plan shows the main level plan, and this gives you an idea of where the existing sanctuary that I just pointed to in the last slide is to the very top of the screen. That would be the existing sanctuary. With this addition, they are proposing to add a second worship center or auditorium. That's right now proposed at about 1,046 seats. We did publish for 1,100 seats, kind of a little bit in flux, but near that, that point. In addition to that, there are some classrooms and office space that is proposed. The, there's a major revision of what is referred to as the commons area in between the, the two sanctuaries that will be upgraded, and there will be a totally new front entrance to the facility that I'll show you in just a moment. This is an aerial view or perspective of what the addition will look like once it's constructed. Again, in the center here, this is kind of the area of the commons that we just pointed to. This would be where the new auditorium is constructed, and then additional classrooms in this area. To give an idea, there will be some remodeling of the existing sanctuary. They will be removing some of the seating from that, but there will be, in addition to the, the addition, if you will, there will be some interior remodeling that is proposed as well. And then this is a concept showing what the new worship center or the new auditorium will look like from the inside. And this is that commons gathering space in between the two. We've got the existing auditorium on, on one side, and then the new auditorium would be on the other side. And this is, again, the main entrance showing a defined space for their members to come into the building to meet before they enter into the worship areas. And then this is just a concept of what the interior of that lobby space, if you will, will appear like. The graphic that is up now is a site plan. This is showing the existing church. Again, that's primarily in this area. This is where the existing auditorium is. This would be the area of the addition with the new auditorium in this general space, and then the entry in through here, and some additional space in, through there. The site plan also includes expansion of the parking area, and this would add additional parking to the south of what's existing out there. It would move this parking in this space, green space in between the south lot line of the church and the single-family lots would be closer, and they're proposing, if you've been out to the site, there's a very large retaining wall. So what they're proposing is to remove part of the retaining wall to do some grading, move part of the wall back further, and then reinstall the wall. In addition to that, across the street, this is the second lot, if you will, that would be created. They're proposing a new parking lot, which is shown here, and then they're proposing additional proof of parking for another 44 stalls in this area. And what proof of parking is, that is where you show where parking can be constructed, but you don't have to construct it up front. This is something that the ordinance allows in order to basically allow for phasing of construction, and if you don't need immediately all of that hard surface area and can do proof of parking, that just shows where additional parking can be constructed if needed, but in the meantime, you leave it as open space, and it is a pervious or green space area. The preliminary plat, again, basically what, what will occur with this is until this plat, Plymouth Avenue, part of 145th Street, part of Innsbruck Lane, none of this had been dedicated. They've been built, there are easements over these areas, and, but it hasn't actually been formally platted and dedicated. So what will result of this is there is, one of the existing parcels that the church has includes basically all of this in through here. So even though you've got Plymouth Avenue bisecting it, it's really all one parcel now for that area, and then there's a second piece where the church is actually located, and a third separate piece to the south. So what will happen then is most, everything will remain as it is, and then the addition that we've talked about will take place in this general area. There will be an expansion of parking that they're proposing in the south area, and then the new parking lot, which is proposed in this area of the site. That is where we're at. With that, again, we did have a lot of comments and issues come up at the neighborhood meeting, so at this point, the public hearing has already been published, notices had already been sent out. So the purpose at this point is to open the public hearing, to take testimony on the application, and then if there's some feedback, some general feedback that the Planning Commission would like to present or discuss, we certainly can do that. The details of the project have not been presented to you, and we do not anticipate doing that because, again, we haven't had that neighborhood meeting yet to talk about possible options to address some of the concerns. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. I appreciate your time. I appreciate everyone's time this evening, and so I thought I'd kind of real quick walk through the process, so everybody kind of knows how we're, what we're going to do. Typically, at this point, I will give the Commissioners the opportunity to ask any additional questions of staff that they may or may not have, have answered, been answered in the presentation. And then I will give the Commissioners the opportunity to speak to the applicant first, if they so wish. And then once that is done, we will open up a public hearing, and when we get a little closer to the public hearing, I'll kind of talk through how we will handle that. Once everybody has spoken at the public hearing, I will close the public hearing. I will give the Commissioners kind of a final chance to talk to staff. This is kind of a little different situation than we normally have with, so in many cases, probably the final part of the meeting will be the Commissioners reiterating or asking for certain things that we would like to see when the application comes back to us. So we do have a full house tonight. I really appreciate everyone being here. There's a lot of times we're sitting here alone, so this is pretty exciting for us, so we have had some pretty big meetings in the past, though. So with that, we'll get going. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff before we move forward? Commissioner Levy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Under the CUP amendment to allow alternative parking standards, what alternative parking standards are we asking about?
With that, again, we would get into the detail of that at the public hearing, and that is- that involves the city, as I think the commissioner is aware, our standards are outlined in the zoning ordinance based on each specific use that's proposed within the building. Several of those require us to take a look at what is associated with maximum occupancy. They have a gymnasium, they've got these two auditoriums, there's school going on, there's daycare, all of those various things. So the standard that we will come up with from the zoning ordinance will be based on the specifics of their, of their building plans, and we'll provide those to you. What the applicant is proposing is a lesser amount of parking based on their transportation study that they've done and feedback, so we'll take a look at that, and it's, we just wanted to notice that as part of the hearing, so that it's something that Planning Commission and Council, you will have further discussion on when this comes back to you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levy, other questions of staff? Commissioners, Commissioner Workman.
Mr. Chair, do we, are we going to dig into this, and maybe this question's for Deb tonight, or should we wait until after the public, or the neighborhood meeting's been conducted before we really sink our teeth into this?
The recommendation from staff is to take the public testimony from all the folks that came out on this night to, to come in, and then if you have some general questions or direction to provide for the applicant, like, well, we really think that you should look into this and this, that type of thing certainly can be discussed, but we would recommend that the item be tabled. And then what will happen is we will re-notify, there will be another public hearing, and at that point, you will have a very detailed staff report like we usually have, and that will also include what has come out of the neighborhood meeting, and then any changes, alternatives, or other things to discuss with the application.
Commissioner Workman, as you're aware, we typically have all the, the past CUP information, a little more detailed information, visuals from the, the different material being used, and, and because of the timing, we don't have a lot of that information. But I want to make sure the commissioners all had the chance to ask any additional questions before we moved forward. Commissioner, any other questions?
Not, not right now, no.
Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, with the limited background information we have, I think I'm more interested in hearing from the people who have come out here tonight. I'm sure they all didn't come just to see us.
We'd like to think that.
Because they're interested, and I would like to hear what they have to say, and later in the meeting, we, I can probably make some comments.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Singh. With that, I will move forward to a public hearing, and I just want to walk through a couple of things. I do want to remind everybody that we do, all of our background information is, is online. If you go to Burnsville.org and look up agendas, you can bring up all the information that we have in front of us. You can also do that in future meetings, so you can see the background information. The, we do have all of the information from the neighborhood meeting, we have about thirty-six points that were provided to us on, on concerns. So I do, I would appreciate, I, I understand everyone's passion, and I do politely ask that if someone has already presented a point, we'd like your presentation to be something that's slightly different or something new to add to the conversation. We do have a fair amount of people to get through this evening. We did, typically, we have people sign up, and I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people that have signed up so far. Once I have kind of worked my way through that list, then I'll, I'll ask for other people to come up and sign up, and if you do, there's a sign-up sheet at the podium, and we just need, before you leave, to get your name and address, so we, we have that for the public record, okay? And I will also ask you that. So the first person I have on my list this evening is David Hook. He was the first person to sign up. Mr. Hook, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You'd want to open?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, I apologize. Hang on just a second, I'm sorry. At this point, I, I would open the public hearing, and we will take testimony from people in, in the chamber. I apologize, sorry. Mr. Hook, your, your name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Hook, and I live at one-five-one-one-one Greenhaven Drive in the Observatory Apartments where you can observe the quality of life that we have in Burnsville. I'm, yeah, Burnsville.
Okay.
I have lived here for ten years, and I enjoy the quality of life we have. I've also appreciated what you've done in the past in developing businesses, as well as the city, and developing its parks. The issue we have right now is a combination, but I really thank you for your time, your effort, your dedication, your devotion to make Burnsville a beautiful city.
Well, thank you, Ms. Hook.
These are qualities which not every city can have, and I talked to your mayor as they came this morning, this afternoon, and she says, "They deserve it. They deserve every compliment I can give to them," and that is from my heart. I'd like to illuminate what you call the heart of the city. The heart of the city to you is, to most of us, is a small designated area which is unnicolate, but the heart of the city is here. It is within your heart, it's within the heart of the people behind us. It is in their prayers, it's in their conduct, it's in their quality of life. It takes many people to build a community, and many institutions to make it solid. It is not always the commerce or the convenient hot dog stand. Many times, it is the unrecognized treasure, its churches. These people have volunteered to make Burnsville a very powerful, insightful, and place to have a family and to enjoy life. We have been honored to have people like you in the past. We have to go back to the history of about sixty years ago, where there's a little plot of land that became owned by Breen Church. Its, its development was at that point unknown, and the planning commissioners did not know exactly what would evolve from it. It started with a small number of people. It grew to a hundred, and it grew to a thousand. It's filled its space because people enjoyed the quality of life it was providing, and they grew it because they enjoyed the Burnsville lifestyle that it had. But the heart is in the eyes of the people looking at you, and it is in the heart of their soul, which is reflected by the cleanliness of those eyes. The expansion that we have of a church is like the expansion of an industry, of commerce place. It adds quality, and it always seems to inconvenience people and asks for exceptions and zoning modifications. But what we're doing is we're building an institution which has been a treasure, and we're making it more of a treasure for our community. The people were involved with our people of the next generation. Instead of saying that the church that came on the block is going to influence hundreds and thousands, we're dealing with a church, a structure that may impact millions. Its audience, because of the internet, is not Burnsville. It is the community called the world. I lived here, I enjoy the people behind me, they're treasures. Just as like the city people enjoy the treasures of your giftedness, which you have dedicated to help, with due diligence and a fiduciary obligation to do what is best, you have modeled that, and we can't say thank you enough. And it's from the people who have lived here, will live here, and the generations will get the gifts from you. We're talking about giving to the future, not a building, but a way of life. We're not talking about building the biggest things, we're talking about something that makes life. That is not done by ordinances, it's not done by police, it's not done by parks, but in combination, they build life. I cannot explain the value, and neither can anybody explain the value, of how their church impacted their life. That's the individual, but it is generational. It's part of our living legacy as an individual, to help the next generation and to complement the things that the past has done. I, from a variety of points of view, have considered both sides of this, not because of spiritual things, but because of value added to the community. The spiritual things can be at any location, it can be in any different building, but the quality of life we have here, and the churches, it's not just this one, we hope other churches can be such a glowing illustration of what God has done and what people have done because of it, that we'd like all of them to expand. We don't like, it doesn't help a community have its church fall, but that is not what happened here, yet the church is growing, and in the process, so is our community. We have grown substantially, and most people that have belonged to successful operations appreciate its growth, but they don't know how to contain it. That's the beauty of, of being, having innovation, and it's the beauty of faith. It's the beauty of having a fiduciary responsibility and owning it. It isn't the responsibility of just attending. That is not what you want from any employee of the state, and that is not what you want from any attender of any church. I can't tell you what the heart means, I can only try to express it in words. It's so individual, but the heart of Burnsville is obvious. It's in your eyes, it's in your devotion, it's in your dedication, and most of all, it's in your tone of welcoming diversity, cultures, and individuality, because in that combination, we have things that grow, and we have a way of making an amicable solution of every problem. Every problem has a DNA, a legacy of things that came together, maybe not intentionally, maybe of not perceived to be constructively, but they came together because they felt even, every opinion and every diversity had a significance. We don't ask for exceptions, we ask to model what we believe in. And I believe that the future of this community is enhanced by honoring the requests, although there are going to be modifications. We do that every day in life. Husbands and wives don't agree, neither do parents and neither do grandkids. And I have a lot of grandkids, and I adjust to them, because if I didn't, I'd get worn out. But the point is that we want to make things successful. We want to have a spirit that makes us know that we are one, we are not separate. We are not taking diversity and education and giftedness as something that we can be in conflict over. We are trying to mold it in a way we can add value to ourselves and bring significance to the, our endeavors. I believe this is going to, this church and its efforts and this, and the hearts of the eyes of the people behind me, and your eyes, can blend together and come up with an amicable solution that makes everybody proud of this moment, because we are not giving a gift to a church, we're giving a gift to our community. And that is what we have to be concerned about. It's a very important moment, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hook, appreciate it. Mark Schrere?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Oh, Mark is, is fine.
Okay. Mark, please give us-
Too hard to say the last name.
Please give us your name and address for the record.
Sure, it's Mark Schrere, and I live at one-four-six-zero-zero Plymouth Avenue South. So just as you come into the church, as you're coming up Plymouth, I'm the very first house on the right, top of the hill. So I'll try to be brief. I'm a, I'm a PK, so preacher's kid, so I grew up in a neighborhood church, St. Louis, Missouri, and we did add an addition to that church during my childhood, and so I have some experience, at least, understanding the, sort of the emotion and compassion that comes along with churches and their expansion in neighborhoods and what that does to that. That, that being said, I'll just, I, I appreciate Ms. Garros talking about the conditional use permit, but there's two things, at least, as I looked that up, since I'm not a zoning guy, that struck me as sort of standards, which is that the conditional use permit is designed to allow flexibility by the zoning authority for their discretion to allow uses of property that would otherwise be prohibited in the specific district for the benefit of the neighborhood. So to me, the benefit of the neighborhood is a very sort of, sort of high standard. It goes on to talk about, in terms of the applicant, in this case, the, the church needing to be able to provide a compelling reason for allowing the exception, and that that exception, once granted, would not negatively impact the surrounding properties. So if I just take a look at those two sort of standards, to me, there's, there's some issues that we have as a neighborhood, and I can't speak for everyone, but certainly for, for me, that don't meet that standard without at least some sort of dialogue and conversation. So most of us, and I know there was a meeting that most of us missed back in September, but most of us did not become aware of sort of the extent of the expansion until last week at the fourth, when the church and sponsored by the city allowed us to come in and have a conversation. So I appreciated the folks from the church that came, that probably wasn't their highlight of their week, listening to a bunch of sort of passionate, angry neighbors, so I appreciate that. But it talks about the importance, I guess, of having a dialogue. So I, I got the sense at that meeting, but since it sounds like it, it's changed, is that it wasn't so much to take in input, but rather to inform us as, as to what they were going to do. Similar to the two thousand dialogue we had, where, again, there was significant expansion of the church, we were able to make a few modifications, I think, but only after we were able to sort of mount a, sort of a, an effort by the neighborhoods to open up the dialogue. So I would ask again, it sounds like perhaps that's being recommended, I think there's a lot of value in sitting down and making sure all parties aren't going to get exactly what they want, but there's probably some mutual ground that makes sense for everyone. That being said, I'll just make, I guess, two other quick points, because I know there's a, there's a line up here behind me, and we're missing the national championship on college football right now, so I'm particularly concerned about that, but anyway. I've gone through the numbers, so the study that was done on traffic was done back in August. It was presented back on the fourth that the church in 2014 grew thirty percent. I don't know what their attendance is, or, excuse me, their membership is, but that's a pretty significant growth rate. The, the study that was done back in August showed that on a given Sunday, between the three services they have in the neighborhood of seventeen hundred people, I think the exact number is one thousand six hundred and ninety-four. So with seventeen hundred people coming into the church on a Sunday, obviously, there's some overlap there, there's a lot of congestion. The projections are eventually they'd like to have as many as twenty-seven hundred people coming to their church on a Sunday. Within the seventeen hundred member auditorium, they're anticipating between two services, not three, they'd have somewhere in the neighborhood of thirteen fifty per service, so that's a thousand additional attendees on a Sunday morning. We have significant traffic issues now, they're adding a crosswalk, there's going to be significant safety issues, that's just an enormous amount of congestion in a very small area. But if I take their numbers, the church had suggested that at the opening of this new building, there'll be seven hundred and fifty people at the morning service, or the early service, and eight hundred at the second service on that day. So that comes into less than, you know, fifteen fifty. So I don't understand how, when this church is not expected to open for another fifteen months, how their actually attendees on a Sunday morning is going to go down versus up. So I think studies need to be done that are more current with what the situation is today than it was six months ago in August. And they are opening a property down in Lakeville, and currently, at least what I've read, and there is a lot of stuff online, there's a lot of stuff online, actually, that opened on October second. Two hundred and fifty people, we were told, from the church are now moving down to that location, taking off some of the burden out of the neighborhood on Sunday- out of the neighborhood on Sunday morning. But by the church's presentation last week, they indicated they've already backfilled that number. So they technically haven't really reduced the number of attendees coming. So I don't see the projections they're giving us seem to make sense to me. I can't make the numbers work. If I take the data that the city had put together relative to how many parking spots are needed for a number of seats, so a 17-person auditorium would have to have 566 parking stalls based on the 3:1 ratio for religious institutions that I've taken from the graph. They already have over 700 parking stalls. I would suggest that they have enough today, and they may have enough in the future. So somehow, we need to sort of make sure that the traffic studies that are being done are current and not six months ago. I'd like to also include Good Shepherd to understand whether they have any plans of increasing their attendance because that's going to add additional people into that same location. That needs to be considered as well. And I guess, just for a last, for a last point, I guess. We're sort of talking about really a point in time on Sunday morning where there's an overlap of time between services. Majority of the time, when the church has Monday meetings, Saturday meetings, Wednesday meetings, there's ample parking. We're talking about Sunday morning between roughly, you know, 9 o'clock and 11 o'clock, where you have a lot of activities. And it just seems like from those that live there, that's a very sort of time we avoid going through that area out of the neighborhood because it gets to be so congested. And it seems like an awful lot of conditional use permits and variances are going to be given when it's really only for a two- or three-hour period of time on a Sunday morning. That seems like an enormous amount to give. I don't know what their plans are for Lakeville. They did explain it's a $12 million project here in Burnsville. I would submit that possibly $12 million could be used to buy property elsewhere in an area that's properly zoned and then could be expanded to their heart's content, much the same way as Hosanna did when they moved from their place along the highway. So from an aesthetic standpoint, when I come up to my house now with the plans as they are, I'm basically going to be driving through the parking lot of the church, with parking lots on both sides, to get to my house. That just doesn't seem right. It's certainly not why I bought the house. Shame on me for not doing my diligence enough to understand what the plans were. But I would guess the church didn't understand that either. But from a safety standpoint, from an aesthetic standpoint, from a number of areas, I just think it's a little too much for a neighborhood that's selling to R1. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you for your time, sir. Our third person on my list this evening is Bob Hillcue. Bob?
Thanks for pronouncing that correctly.
I'm sorry. I'm going to probably mess all of these up, so I'll just, I apologize.
No, that's great. You did good. My name, my name, yes?
Please give us your name pronounced appropriately and your current address.
My name pronounced appropriately, depending on what part of my family you talk to, we pronounce it Hillcue. So my name's Bob Hillcue. My lovely wife is in the second row back there. And I'll be hopefully very brief. My wife and I moved to Burnsville in 1972. So needless to say, we have lived here for a long time. And if any of you have any questions about what it was like back in '72, just see me after the meeting. Be happy to fill you in. We've lived in three different houses in this community. We started going and tending Breen in 1994. And as one of the people earlier said, you know, Breen's been around for about 60 years. So my only point here is to say that we're well-invested in this community. We're well-invested in this church. My wife Linda was actually on staff at the church for about eight years. She retired about three years ago herself. So she was invested in the church and all the inner workings of what a church is and the good parts and the bad parts or whatever. But from our perspective, this is just a great group of people, very conscientious about the community, very invested in the community. I can't speak to some of the pieces. At one point, I was involved with the missions in our, in this church, mission committee, and the amount of money that goes out to various groups. There are several groups within this community that the church donates considerably to, both in time and in, you know, real money. So it's, it's just a wonderful place to be. I hope that you'll really consider approving this. I am a little surprised that with the amount of effort that the city staff has gone to for over three months in this application from late September, from what I understand, to this point, to then have what I would consider to be a major blow-up last week with that meeting, which is understandable. I've been in your boots before. I served on the planning commission in the 80s for one term. I was on the Burnsville Financial Planning Commission before that. So I know a little bit about what these meetings are like from time to time. So your job is not easy, and I appreciate what you do. I really do. I'm glad that you're doing what you're doing. It's not easy. It's not easy. So all I'm going to say is I hope that you will seriously consider moving this along. Continuing delay and delay, I think the city and the staff have worked really hard for over three months on this project. And to continue to push it and push it and push it. I don't know, there's probably hundreds of people who live in Burnsville who attend Breen Church. Granted, all 66 of the families don't live in the community that has some of these questions. But I'm convinced that between the staff and the church, you'll work that all out, hopefully, soon. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Ken Hogland. Ken, please give us your name for the record and your address.
Hi, I'm Ken Hogland. I live at 2004 East 125th Street in Burnsville, 55337. You've heard mentioned several times tonight, the 2000 building plan. I had the pleasure of being the chairman of the building committee for that $6 million project. And I had the opportunity to present to you people, the planning commission back then, and the city council a couple of different times. And that project went forward, and as a result, the church expanded. We're a tremendous asset to the community and will continue to be. So, you know, not only do we give to local activities, but we give hundreds of thousands of dollars to charities, to the poor, to the needy. And the church has been growing since it started. I've been with the church now for 45-plus years. The church has been growing and is continuing to grow. The last several years have seen a real growth and expansion. And we really need this additional space to serve the community and to serve our Lord. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up on my list is Paul Wilson. Paul? So far, I've been doing okay. If we had like a Ron Smith or a Tim Jones or something, I might-
Well, I spell my name with Wilson with two L's.
Okay. Please give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Paul Wilson. I live at 217 Geneva Boulevard. And I've been a Burnsville resident for about 16 years. My biggest concern with the expansion is not so much the building itself, but the traffic. And I, like everybody else in this room, probably learned about this when we came back from Christmas vacation last week. And to me, every Sunday's always been kind of a challenge to get in and out of our addition. On any given Sunday, there's 100-plus cars that go up and down Plymouth, as well as Innsbruck Lane. I live on the corner of Innsbruck and Geneva Boulevard. And one Sunday, just for fun, I sat out there and counted the cars that went through a not-through-street neighborhood on that. So that being said, I, it was kind of interesting. Saturday, Scott was running around our neighborhood and said, "Go look at the signs in the interest of our neighborhood." And it says, "Be a good neighbor. Right turn only, not a through-street." And it was interesting, I stayed home from church yesterday, and I counted the number of cars that went down our street. And Breen was a good neighbor. There was only 10 cars. Of course, it was probably one of the coldest Sundays out there, but, and their church lot wasn't exactly full. I'm all for expansion, and I think it's great to see a community church grow. But this expansion looks like a megachurch, in my opinion. And so I agree with, you know, go south, build out in Lakeville someplace. But again, my main concern is the traffic. And to see those cars go up and down the street that I helped pay for on my property taxes, which just increased about three years ago, I got lucky, I live on a corner. So I would, I would highly suggest that let's look at this. Let's find a compromise. Let's look at it closely. And I'm sure there is a compromise that we can find. And if Breen, you know, the parish would go the other ways out, out through our neighborhood, I think that's a great compromise if we can prevent that. Because it is difficult to get out of our neighborhood on any given Sunday from about 8 to about 12. Even when you go down Innsbruck Lane to go out on South Cross, I sit there and wait for people that are coming from the church to make a left or right-hand turn out of there. So again, I, I think the, there's a compromise that we can find. We just got to find that basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I do apologize. I would have been one of those 10 people. I did drive up and down Innsbruck during the services this weekend. So you can probably take it, you can take it to nine. I was trying to understand the process, so. The next person on our list this evening, Damon, I'm not even going to, I'll let you introduce yourself.
So I'm Damon Lolliberry, and I'm at 14609 Innsbruck Lane. I would be the neighbor directly to the south of Breen Baptist Church on their property line proper. And Deb, I might ask your assistance because I have a visual that Jim said I'd be able to project overhead here. So if you could show me how to work that, I'd certainly be appreciative, sir.
We're there.
Yep, you'll see on the TV up there. It's not real convenient.
Nope, that's okay. I can step back. These microphones are quite good. And it kind of goes, okay, there we go. So I want to thank commissioners and staff, Deb, for hosting the meeting last week here. Also Eric and Kay from the church. As somebody said earlier, it probably wasn't the most comfortable meeting they've had recently, but I thought there was good dialogue. And Deb, thanks for summarizing that in the plan. And I think Deb started off well today. I think, you know, this is a complicated project. I think from a neighborhood resident standpoint, it's complicated in a different way for us than it is for the planning commission. There is, you know, talk about, you know, questions about how things are platted and things of that nature. And quite frankly, from a neighborhood perspective, you know, I don't care how things are platted. I care how things look. And I've been a resident of Burnsville since 2002. My wife and I lived on the north side of 42 in some townhomes. And when we started to have a family in 2013, we looked at where we wanted to expand that family, and we looked in other areas, and we decided to reinvest in Burnsville. We moved .6 miles to the south on the south side of 42 and bought this property. And at the time, we certainly bought knowing that we were, you know, budding up to a church property. But we did our research too to know how that property was zoned and talked with some of the neighbors about the expansion from previously. And we were very comfortable, you know, with that at the time. You know, I think for us, as others have mentioned, this is an issue of traffic, of parking, and of size and scope. So just like my wife and I outgrew our previous home and decided we needed to look elsewhere to grow our family, I think that's something that the church needs to consider too. So nobody, some people have made mention the good works that Breen does and what they do for causes, their parishioners. They have a fantastic, a fantastic congregation effect. My wife and I, before we, you know, learned of the project, we actually went to Breen on Christmas Eve. Wonderful service and a very active, and a very active parish. I think the question for us as a neighborhood is, is it a, is it a proper use of a conditional use permit to put a 42-foot, 26,000-square-foot addition that's near the size of the Ames Center in an R1 residential area? So I think that was kind of a poignant moment on, at the neighborhood meeting that was supposed to last an hour and went two and a half. When that was shared with us, there was kind of an audible gasp in the room that this addition would be in the size and scope of the Ames Center. So I take some, some umbrage with that because certainly, as I'll show you here in a second, this addition's going to come out a number of feet towards my shared property line with the church. And, you know, is essentially kind of a mini movie theater. But I, and I'm sorry that I don't have more information for you. You know, I was one of the neighbors that found out about the plans and the scope of this at the neighborhood meeting previously. So I did not know about this project, you know, prior to the December 27th letter sent to us. I know the church has made mention, and in their narrative, talked about the fact that one neighborhood meeting was held. And as others have pointed out, there was one attendee to that. So I kind of take some umbrage too as whether or not that's really a neighborhood community meeting and how they maybe needed to reassess our engagement in that process. But nonetheless, we are where we are today. So I did some research of my own. I know that my neighbor has talked about the traffic and the parking study and have crunched those numbers. I'm a banker, I need calculators for that. But I did do some research of my own this weekend just to provide some anecdotal evidence. Because one of my pieces of feedback in the neighborhood meeting was I said, you know, anecdotally, you don't need this parking lot to the west. So I go to a different church. We usually go to church on Saturdays. So Sunday mornings, my little guy and I, we walk up the berm and through the south and east parking lot of Breen and down the berm that is shared with Lund's and Barley's, and we go get a donut. And I can tell you that on most Saturdays, that parking is wide open. And so I'll just share with you, and I have copies, hard copies, if anyone would like it. But on Saturday for the 5:00 p.m. service, I went over in the middle of the service and just took some pictures of the parking lot. And you'll see, you know, significant amounts of parking. In fact, I detailed 486 spaces that were open during the 5:00 o'clock service. And you can see from a number of different angles. This would be looking towards the east from the west opening. Again, this is looking from the west side of the property back east. And then I also did some research on Sunday morning, and this would be in the middle of the 8:30 service. And again, if you bear with me for a moment, there was 402 open parking spaces during the 8:30 service. Again, I can kind of show you from different angles, the parking. I think you get the gist of it. And I think one of my neighbors will share with you later. I was unable to attend during the 9:50 and 11:15. But there were 101 parking spaces during the 9:50 service, which I would anticipate is their largest, just kind of based on the time of the day. Hard to get little kids up and people want to get home and watch football. But then during the 11:15, there was 421 parking spots available during that service. So again, I say anecdotally, and I wish I had the opportunity to, to provide some more feedback based on more Saturday and Sunday services. But unfortunately, I didn't, I didn't have that opportunity. A couple of other things, just to address. On the schematic barb, if you could maybe go back to the one that was sent to the neighborhood organization?
That one I don't have.
You know what? I have it.
I believe it's based on this one, but it's not colored.
Yeah, so. So that one that you went back to, Deb, was perfect. If you can go back to that. Yep. Yep, thank you, dear. Thank you, Deb. That's the one. So you can see, one of the, one of the things that is also concerning to me is, as the person that shares the property line where this would be built towards, there was no plan for any additional landscaping to act as a barrier between the current southern property line and this proposed addition. I made some shots just so you can see here. Thank you, Deb. So this is standing in my driveway to the south of the property. You can see through some of the trees there, the A-frame of the current worship center, which is about 35 feet tall. Again, this would come out some 100 feet to the south and be 42 feet tall. Again, this would come out some hundred feet to the south, and be 42 feet tall. This would be a shot from the end of my driveway. Again, you can see the apex of the current A-frame worship center. And then, this is the last picture, which is taken from the property across the street, the Abernathy's, the end of their driveway. So you can see, even if we were going to approve this project in its current size and scope, something serious would need to be done to protect, you know, that visual from the southern shared property line, and that's nowhere in the project, and we gave that feedback to Deb. But again, I think that, I appreciate the opportunity to talk today and to speak previously with Deb. I appreciate the commission's goal to slow this process down a little bit. But again, I think as a commission, you know, we need to take seriously the integrity of the R1 zoning that exists today. They've already had a conditional use permit based on the previous addition, and I think that the size and scope and the other traffic-related issues that, the type of growth I think they would like to have in this facility, whether it happens or not, poses a serious concern for us, obviously, as a neighborhood, and I'd look forward to, you know, trying to work with Breen in the coming weeks to try and come to some modification. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. The last person we have that's signed up is Christine, and Christine, I can't read the, sorry. But you're at 200 Innsbruck Lane, I do have that.
My name is Christine Knurk. I live on 200 Innsbruck Lane, Burnsville, Minnesota, 55306. So, my husband and I, Paul, in the gray shirt there, we've lived in our house for 23 years. We're on the corner of Innsbruck Lane and Plymouth, it's right on the corner. I was going to say something, but it's already in the list that was provided to you on the document from Deb, but a bit of rebuttal from the first gentleman that spoke about quality of life, and totally agree with him that a church like Breen provides a great quality of life for the congregation, but you have to think about the neighborhood quality of life. We were there at the expansion in 2000, worked with the church and the city to have something that was palatable, if you will, but quality of life, and for at least my husband and I know for our neighbors, that was compromised greatly. We had woods all the way back to 42, now that's all parking lot. So you can imagine what a loss that was for us. Now, with this project, again, going back to the same thing, quality of life is going to be compromised. So when you're thinking about this, think about us and the neighborhood, and where we're sitting, and we're living, and how this is going to affect us for many years to come. So, and I think that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite the next, who would like to, you've stood up, sir, come on up. Now, I don't have any other people that have signed up, so you'll have to state your name and address for the record.
Sure, I'm Robert Brechner. I live at 14725 Innsbruck Circle. I've been in the neighborhood.
Deb, you need to sign, or are you?
I'm not on your list, so I do need to sign up.
So we'll have you, if you could, before, when you're done, sign up that list that's right there on the podium in front of you. You don't have to, go ahead and give us your thoughts.
So, yeah, I'll be real brief, a lot of the things were mentioned, and I don't want to repeat it, but just three points that I have, is, the first one, the notification that I got was a call from two days ago, so I would request that at the next meeting, that you call both that either here or on site, that you would actually send a letter notification out to the entire neighborhood. I think there's 58 homes in our interlock-in place, and I think it'd be nice if everybody was notified, and we didn't hear about it word of mouth. So, Chairman, I don't know if that's something that you can do, so that everybody does have a say and is aware of it. I think it's important. Second, having a church as a neighbor is great, love it. I've been there 25 years, I've seen them grow, I couldn't be more behind their mission and their community outreach. I mean, that's fantastic, that's what churches do, but there is a downside to continual growth, and they have, right now, we're not talking about a neighborhood church. What we're talking about is really an event center that is a church. They've got daycare, they've got school, they've got men's group, ladies' group, they have all kinds of other activities. I think church service is just one of many, so they have a lot of activities, so I think we need to keep that in perspective, that what's going on here with the addition of over a thousand-seat facility and amphitheater is not having a neighborhood church. It's really having, someone to use the term, megachurch or an event center. And lastly, the traffic has been mentioned, and I just want to bring up a couple points. I lived down in the other cul-de-sac, and I was one of those that was part of the 2000 that videotaped and showed the traffic, and the planning commission had approved it, and at the last minute when we heard about it, we actually did some film evidence to show what kind of traffic problems there were. It was to the point that I could not turn left out of the cul-de-sac after something had been, after a service was ending or released. The, I think it was mentioned, the neighborhood going south is a steep downhill with a curve. Twice over the last several years, I've had my mailboxes run over from cars that have gone down there too fast. It's dangerous, it's a dangerous curve, and I'd ask, you know, all of you to go take a look at it, and I've almost had my daughter run over there because there was a bus stop there. I'm not saying they're church members or anything, but I'm just saying the increased traffic causes an issue there. There will be, no matter what traffic curbing measures the city tries to incorporate, there is going to be additional traffic through the neighborhood. It just happens, I've seen it for 25 years. They did all types of traffic curbing with right-only, no-through sign, and we've got a blind intersection, and it states a hidden intersection on a curve with a steep hill, and it is very treacherous. I think it becomes a safety factor, and also, I'm not sure at certain times of the day that you could get fire and rescue or ambulance through there in a timely manner, based on the traffic I've seen. Lastly, when I depart out of the neighborhood on a Sunday morning, I will drive up through the north end, and they have traffic police right now monitoring and trying to move it through there, and it is really tough to get through, and I don't have counts, and I don't have the number of vehicles or empty spaces or parishioners, I'm just real life, and there is a tremendous amount of traffic. So, I think to look at this facility, it is, I think, outgrown, it's nowhere near a neighborhood church, it's outgrown where it's at, but at the end of the day, I couldn't support their outreach any more than I do, but there's the downside to it, that really, I think, all neighborhood residents need to be notified, and I think we need to figure out, how is this going to affect the traffic, and I don't see how it could with an expansion at that location. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, sir, you lived on Innsbruck Circle?
Yes, it's a cul-de-sac at the south end of the facility. I'll step over here.
Thank you. I'd like, yes, ma'am, please give up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
I am Joan Shattuck, and I live at 15028 Windmere Lane, Burnsville, 55306. My husband and I are new to the area, we just moved here last spring, moved here because my husband's job moved here. Thank you. I just wanted to say, what has, for me, what's made Burnsville feel like home is Breen Baptist Church. Neighbors invited us, we went, it's just been an incredible blessing. I just wanted to say, for me, it makes Burnsville a place where I want to be. I didn't want to move to Burnsville, I was happy where I was, I just came because my husband's job moved. It's made Burnsville a place where you want to be, I think it makes Burnsville look good. The reason it's growing is because it is very alive and vibrant. I would like to sincerely invite anyone in the room to please come, because you'll see what it's all about. I'm really hopeful that whatever traffic concerns, I think we can work it out, because the people there are really quite amiable and lovely, and we'd like to work at it. So, just one other thing, just attendance varies because of weather, vacations, snowbirds, so sometimes the parking lot might be really full, and other times it's more open, there's lots of different reasons for that variability, and so, in the few short months that we've been there, you know, hey, we're aware of that, so, that's all.
Thank you very much. Could I have you step over and, thank you.
Yes, sir, please, I'm going to say this a lot, please step up to the podium, give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Randy Rayle. I live at 14912 First Avenue South in Burnsville, 55306, which is approximately a half-mile south of Breen. I have been a business owner in Breen since 1986, lived in Burnsville since 2004, have been a Breen attendee since, excuse me, 1991. We have watched Breen grow as a church from approximately 700 when we started to what it is today. From the very beginning, there was the idea, my understanding is, from having been in leadership at Breen for a number of years, not currently, but when I was there, is that Breen was always planned to grow. In fact, the current expansion, 2000, the wall that was between the old structure and the new structure was intentionally built so that there could be expansion there. When that building was built, we didn't build the large sanctuary that we're proposing. Now, we held off building that proposed sanctuary till now, because we wanted to modify and continue to grow and keep the community with us as much as possible. I can say from my time in leadership at Breen, and even from the meeting that was just there, that in a short amount of time, Breen bends over backwards to work within the neighborhood. We had signs up on the road, going up the hill that's been described, to ask people to go down to Grand and around a different way. We make every effort to work within the neighborhood as much as possible. I would probably encourage the city to look at widening that road, it's a dangerous road because it is so narrow. It's narrow, there isn't enough room because it wasn't made wide enough to begin with, and that's part of the problem, it was a city deficiency in my mind there. I've driven that road many times, and been the only car going up and down that street. By the gentleman's own description, we're talking about two hours once a week that there's a traffic problem. It takes minutes to get in and out of the sanctuary, and not a huge amount of time. And I know that we work very hard to be a good neighbor, and, sorry, it is a neighborhood church, because I am a neighbor to that church, and I go there. And I can say that Breen works very hard to be that good neighbor to everyone else around, that berm that's built, if you've looked at the property, was built specifically for the neighbors to kind of hide things, you can see the pine trees that were added in the picture that the gentleman just showed, were to help hide the current sanctuary from his view. I'm sorry he didn't do his due diligence, because the plans have always been there for the church to grow and expand, as long as I've known that, that's been the whole idea of the Breen, to be a growing church. Some people have said you should move to a different part. Well, in the time that I've been at Breen, we've planted maybe a half dozen or more different churches in order to kind of keep our growth down. We've opened up doors in Eagan, in Shakopee, now in Lakeville, we've had other different ways of doing things to try and keep growing the church outside of our current borders, and yet, there is a need to expand our current sanctuary. We're over 80% of our capacity already. Every Sunday you go there, we're using our gym as worship space because we're so full. And there's a saying in my profession, people like to go where people like to go, because people like to go where people like to go. What that means is, when you've got a good thing going, people are going to come. You know, you don't tell people during Christmas season not to come to the Burnsville Center because it's going to be busy with traffic. You live with the traffic because you know it's something that's important to do, and this is a great facility, it provides great services for the people, and we are neighbors that live there. We make every effort to pay our bills diligently. Every expansion that I know of at the church has been paid off before the due date, in fact, many times way beforehand, because the people donate heartily towards the projects that were there. Some of the things that were mentioned about the roofing structure, you know, all these different things are done to make it a good-looking building for the community. And I know that when concerns are brought up that aren't, that there's good reason for them, I'm sure that the church is willing to listen to those. And the heart of the people is there to not be adversarial, it's to be a blessing to the community around. So, I would encourage you to move forward this. It does take time to build a large structure, we understand that, but delays are costly. The last expansion, I know, cost us more than what it should have because of delays that we had, and anything we can do to move this along quicker and still take into consideration what's happening in the community would be greatly appreciated, from my perspective as a church contender. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. I would appreciate any comments come directly to the commissioners, not engaging in the audience, we're here to ask questions and take testimony. Thank you. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Susan Bowles, I live at 14604 Plymouth Avenue, I'm right on the corner, Mark is my next-door neighbor, Chris is across the street. I would like to speak to a couple of things, the traffic, which everyone has mentioned, but I actually went through the effort to try to change the traffic patterns on my own in my neighborhood. Because I live on the corner, we moved in in 2003, I gave birth to twin girls. I was very concerned about the amount of traffic running past my front door. Our lot is on a hill which camps to the west and downhill on one side, and down off the back on the other side, so we've done significant improvements to our property, just so we have a place for our kids to be, because they cannot be in the front yard, there's just too much traffic. People speed through there, we had the city come out, do an assessment, and finally, after a little over a year, we finally got a stop sign put at the corner of Plymouth and Innsbruck. But it does not do a lot to curb the amount of traffic coming through there. People speak to the couple hours on Sunday, it's not a couple hours on Sunday, it's also on Wednesdays, it's also on Monday nights, it's any time in the summertime when there's an event going on at the church. We can't get in and out of our driveway, and we are right up by the corner, so we have to stop and wait for the traffic to go by. It's not safe for my kids, it's not safe to walk your dog, it's not safe for kids on bikes, it's a neighborhood, it's not supposed to be a thoroughfare, but it's turned into that. I keep hearing things about, we don't want to expand and move elsewhere. I'm a member of All Saints Church in Lakeville, I was a previous member at St. Joe's in Rosemont. Both of those are Catholic churches, which outgrew their facilities after many, many years. In fact, most of them were over 100 years on their site when they finally decided they just can't expand anymore, and there's no point in doing it. So they moved their facilities to new facilities. The church is not the building, the church is the people and the community. The community will go wherever the building is. If the building moves six blocks down the road, they'll go there, if it moves three miles down the road, they'll go there. We have to live here, though, this is our home, this is our investment, this is where we want to raise our families, this is where we chose to be. So I think, you know, they need to start, you know, respecting that. I make at least three calls a year to the Breen to ask them to have their people quit coming by our house on Sunday morning, and it's good for about one week, sometimes two, and then it's right back to the same traffic. They were nice enough to put signs out, I thank them very much for that, but the signs came down, and the traffic's right back. There is nothing that I can see, unless our city engineers, who hopefully are wise enough to figure out how to do this, can figure out to cut down on the through-traffic there, not just from the church, but from other people in the community. It's become the shortcut to get to 42, and nobody's doing anything to stop that, and the church being there doesn't help that, and church expanding would make it even worse. So, I would like, again, to look at the traffic, to look at the safety, that's another thing, because we have kids, and there are other kids in the neighborhood too, and we need to think about them. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Can I have you sign?
I sign here?
Yeah, or anywhere, so. I would take the next person that would like to speak.
Hey, my name is...
Please give us your name and address for the record.
Perfect, Eric Rose, I live on 17123 Hollyhock in Lakeville, but the reason I'm up here is, I'm on the elder board at Breen, and I'm chair in the building committee here, so I had the opportunity to be a part of the neighborhood meeting last week, and just the quick words I want to say is, just appreciate your guys' time, appreciate the staff, we've gone back and forth with the engineering group, with the planning group, more revisions than you would like when you come into a plan review, but I think it's been fruitful. And when we had the October neighborhood meeting, I would agree with the gentleman that came up here and said, does that really count if there's only one person, it's not really neighborhood? "Does that really count if there's only one person? It's not really a neighborhood meeting." And we do agree with that. But that wasn't our intention. Our intention was to get a wide breadth. And when we didn't have that, we started going further and further down the road of design. And then last week kind of threw us a curveball, even though it's understanding. So, I'm just coming for you to tell you that we feel like we've done a lot of due diligence. We feel like the neighborhood hasn't been informed, even though we may have tried. So, taking a neighborhood meeting on January 17th, where we plan on bringing our traffic engineer there, he's also here this evening. So, he might come up and give just a little color into what happened in the existing traffic study. So, you guys know that we understand the concern and we sympathize with the concerns of the residents. And we are gonna do everything we can to be the best neighbor. So, I look forward to coming back here in about a month and proposing some, maybe some concessions, if you want to say that, on our side, and try to make a project that benefits both us as well as can meet the needs of the neighborhood. So, Matt, our traffic engineer, will kind of come up here next. So, thank you, guys. Do you want me to sign still?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
And the traffic engineer, I appreciate your time. I want to make sure that we hear from the neighborhood.
Oh, that's fine.
And the traffic engineer definitely would be something that would be presented in future information would come to us in our background.
That's okay.
Okay, yeah. If we could maybe put that over there behind Deb. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, state my name.
Name and address for the record.
Sure. Branton Aminski, 14705 Innsbruck Lane in Burnsville. And I'm a resident on Innsbruck Lane for 13 years, and I am a father of three boys. And so, I'd just like to reassert one point that was subtly stated here by the gal here on the corner, that safety is my main concern here. Traffic is one thing, but when it impacts the safety of my children, that's key. And so, my kids like to bike. They like to skateboard, all three being boys. They're on their rollerblades. They're either on Geneva. Innsbruck is quite steep in front of my home, so it's more difficult for them to play right immediately there. But crossing that Innsbruck lane to get over to Geneva, to their friends' homes, to use the street, to ride their bicycles safely, so on and so forth. Obviously, I have a role in their safety, helmets, rules of the road. But I will say, you know, at times where traffic is high, we, they can't use the streets when it is a high-traffic time. And it is, again, not just Sunday evenings, or Sunday mornings, rather, but it is at times when there are church events. So, that's something that, I guess, the question I would pose to the planning team and to the city is, how in this plan for expansion is traffic and safety, more importantly, being dealt with? What are the elements of the plan? I noticed signage up this recent Sunday. After being here for 13 years, that's the first time I've noticed signage up. So, I think if it did make a difference, as some residents have stated, that's wonderful. That's a great start. Also, think about the speed. What is the speed going through that neighborhood? This is for any traffic through there. We do find that Innsbruck is, tends to be a high-speed thoroughfare, especially going downhill. That gravity effect or whatever it is, the impact of that road, that goes right in front of my home. And my neighbors also have some young children that it is a risk. So, those are the factors that I would want to make sure are under consideration to minimize traffic flow to and from Breehan. And then also, the speed considerations going through there, if there's anything that the city or the plan can include.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can sign up over behind Deb. We'd appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak? Thank you, ma'am. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Jenny Munson. I live at 13012 High Point Curve, Burnsville, 55337. I've attended Breehan about 29 years now. And the only thing I want to bring up is, when I first started attending Breehan, Plymouth Avenue didn't exist. And we owned land into the woods, as we always called it. And we used to take little hay rides through there with VBS and such. And I'd just like to get kind of on the record that Breehan didn't put the road in that now causes the traffic to flow all the way through that neighborhood. That was done through the county, through the city, things like that. I understand it makes a horrible situation. I have small children. I live on a fairly through street also in Burnsville that people cut through to get from County Road 11 to get down to Gideon Pond School. And I understand that. I have small kids that used to ride bikes and all those types of things. But it wasn't Breehan that put the road in that's causing some of those things. I hope we can come to an understanding and a way to prevent that traffic from going through there. I truly do. I think it's important for the safety of the kids and the families in that neighborhood that they feel safe in their neighborhood. And so, I love Breehan. I love attending there. I want to be a good neighbor. I want to respect what they have as fears and concerns. So, I just wanted to kind of state that.
If you can step over and fill that out.
Yep.
I do appreciate everyone's comments. I do think we've gotten some information on traffic. I would like to, I'd like to invite anybody else that has something additional to add that may or may not have been spoken. Ma'am, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Deborah Hunter-Cook. I'm at 12805 Countryview Lane. That is in Burnsville, 55337. Wanted to just speak to the point regarding Breehan picking up and moving and as a congregation and moving out to Lakeville or other places. As a longtime 35-year-plus resident of Burnsville, I would be sad to think that the only option is to leave Burnsville. It's a great community, but it's made greater by organizations like Breehan, the value, the quality, the richness that it brings. I think it would be a very sad situation if the alternative to compromise and whatever it takes for this would be to actually say, just church, you know, whether you could sell all that land. Because I know that we own the land on the other side that hasn't been built either. But I think it would be just a sad situation for our community to say that the only thing, like my neighbors that have so often said, "Burnsville, you know, it's an older community. The schools aren't as good. They're growing out of their homes. What do they do? They pick up and move." And I think, again, that's kind of a sad thing for Burnsville. I think that that's something we would want to prevent if possible. So, I just would like to encourage the community to find a way to make the compromises, to address the traffic, which sounds like it's not just the church, but the traffic in that area. Make a compromise for that. But I sincerely hope that the solution is not for the church to move like my neighbors have when they've grown out of their homes and moved to Lakeville because we need to be in Burnsville. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Please step up to the podium and give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Dan Colgan. I live at 231 Carriage Lane, the south side of Innsbruck. And so, Innsbruck has been a pathway historically for us, going to church, because it's just straight up the hill. And on Sunday, we noticed the sign that said, "Please turn left and go up another direction." And we were obedient to that. So, I wasn't one of those 10 cars, thankfully.
And I already admitted one of them was me.
Yeah.
It was in all the name of the application.
Yeah. We have about, within our neighborhood, I think there's probably six families that attend Breehan on the Carriage Lane circle there. And I know some of our neighbors were upset of the sign, saying, "Well, why can't we just drive up? This is our neighborhood, too." But I understand, being in a neighborhood that sometimes gets attacked by traffic patterns. When we first moved to the Minneapolis area back in 85, we lived in South Minneapolis and the planes flew right over our house. And we were one of those families that tried to attack the Metropolitan Commission on, "You need to reroute these traffic areas for planes." So, we moved to Burnsville in 92. And then the Airport Commission decided they were gonna build a longer runway and rerouted the traffic again right over our house. And so, this was in northeast Burnsville. So, then we thought, "Well, let's move south." So, we came down to South Cross area and decided, "Well, maybe this'll be a little bit quieter down here." And also found out, "Well, the planes still go right over our house." So, sometimes you just can't get away from these things. But that being said, having understood the traffic issues, I'll contest to that that there are some issues there. I think that hill that goes down Innsbruck is, especially in the winter, for anybody, whether it be a neighbor or someone traveling through that neighborhood, is a dangerous road. It doesn't always get salted in time, and it's slippery during the winter, and people can get out of control. So, I appreciate the parents that have children in that neighborhood and appreciate their concern for that. I look at our neighborhood and I think, you know, it composes itself of hundreds of family members. And I think, "Well, what is the impact that Breehan has on that neighborhood?" And then I think of the neighborhoods that Breehan impacts across this community. Lakeville, Apple Valley, Rosemount, down to Cannon Falls, out to Shakopee, Eden Prairie. People come from all over to attend Breehan Baptist Church. And I think of the impact that it makes not only on the Burnsville community, but also those communities where those people come from. And then I think of globally, which I think David alluded to earlier, that Breehan not only has an impact to this community and surrounding communities in the metro area, but it has an impact into countries and villages across the globe. And some of those villages have undereducated children that we're providing education for. We're providing meals for. We're providing a different way of life for those individuals. And so, when I think of sacrifice, the members of Breehan sacrifice not only their time but also their finances to support those missions and support those communities across the globe. Sometimes it's not only a church, but it's a community that needs to sacrifice. And sometimes it's sacrificing those desires that we've had to have a safe community or to provide an area that we can grow up in. And sometimes we have to sacrifice some of those things, and not only as a church but also as a community. And so, my point is, is that we want to be a village here. And we want to support not only the activities at Breehan, as a member myself, but also our community. And as a neighbor on the other side of South Cross, I can appreciate the comments that have been here today. And I think that we'll come to some kind of resolution and compromise that can be win-win for all of our neighbors. And so, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, not only for myself but as a community. And I think that's, it's a growing aspect. Growth is always difficult. There's always change. And I think we can come to a resolution that's satisfying for all people. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to a topic we haven't covered? Yes, sir.
Hi, thanks a lot for hearing me. My name is Robert Mossenhoff. I live at 14741 Innsbruck Lane in Burnsville. We bought our home on July 1st of 1988. And we are on the corner of South Cross and Innsbruck. So, I'm about as far away from the church as you can get and still be in the community. And just wanted to reiterate about some of the traffic problems that I encounter trying to get out of my driveway on Monday nights, Wednesdays, Sundays, and things like that. It's very difficult. And people are kind of like always in a hurry to get there. And they drive a lot faster on Innsbruck than I think is needed. And so, I just see that that road is small, it's narrow, but I don't think widening is gonna help anything at all. It's the situation that people are using as for a thoroughfare. One thing I get billed for is the repaving of Innsbruck and South Cross is a double whammy. And I'm providing those streets for these parishioners to go to their church. Just FYI, I'm okay with that. We're part of the community. But it's just something that we have to look at and find a way around because Innsbruck is just not a good thoroughfare to go through. And there are people that have kids, and you can't walk your dog. I can't, so. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments this evening, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item this evening? Anyone?
If you may make another comment.
I would appreciate, I'm not looking at this point to have comments back and forth. So, if you have something new to add, sir, please.
I do. So, I think it was Damon Lollberti, 14609 Innsbruck Lane. It had been mentioned, a neighborhood meeting, a second, or I guess, third, depending how you want to count it, neighborhood meeting, I think Eric mentioned for the 17th. I just encourage the commissioners, the city planning office. We can't continue to, I don't plan my life a week out. And I appreciate that this has been a conversation that's been going on internally at the church for a year. I know there's been a lot of back and forth between staff and the church over the past number of months. I realize that when you delay construction, costs go up. I'm a banker, so I appreciate that. But again, I don't plan my life, and neither do my neighbors, on a week-by-week basis in when a meeting is gonna be held. So, I'd love to encourage the commission and the city planning office to encourage Breehan to plan this in a manner that is neighborhood-friendly. You know, to tell me, "Jeez, well, we'll have another meeting next week because we're in a hurry and we'd like to break ground the week after Easter." I appreciate that. We could have mitigated that on the front end. So, I'd like to suggest that to the commission and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Yes, sir. Can I please have you step up to the podium and?
Right here?
Yes. And please give us your thoughts on anything we haven't already covered, sir.
Yeah, well, I might have some overlap. I'm Scott Berg. I'm at 200 Geneva Boulevard. I've been a resident of Burnsville since 1992. Deb, how do I turn this on?
Actually, if you just want to put something down.
They've already picked it up, sir.
Okay.
If you look up it.
Great, perfect.
Set it down.
I'm not quite ready to share what I've got on my screen, but when I tell you, will you put it up, please?
They're usually pretty good about that in the back room, so.
All right, there we go.
See, they put something else up for me. It's magic.
All right, well, no one's questioning the value that Breehan brings to the community. And we all recognize that they're bringing a valuable contribution to this community and to the world through their missionary efforts. And we're not asking you to leave Burnsville. We're asking you to be a good neighbor. And I wouldn't, I'd be here if one of my other neighbors wanted to create a 40-foot addition to their home or encroach on my property line. And that's what we're facing. Our current compromise was with the church back in 2000 when they wanted to expand. And we made that compromise with the agreement that we'd have no through-street on Innsbruck. I'd like to remind everyone that this is an R1 neighborhood. And that R1 neighborhood was designed in, well, I would just say that Innsbruck Lane was designed in mind for Interlock and Woods. It was never intended to be a through-street. Socialization, we've talked about that a little bit, you know. I called many of the neighbors to alert them to this meeting. So, it was, the first meeting I heard about was last week. So, we do need to do a better job of socializing and communicating with our neighbors. I look at the zoning of R1A as being a pretty precious thing. And I appreciate community churches. And I welcome Breehan, but I don't welcome their addition. And I'm absolutely 100% opposed to it for a number of reasons. If I look at the Breehan plat, it looks like... If I look at the Breen plat, it looks like a megachurch to me. And the plat that you see on the screen right now doesn't show the entire land. It only shows you part of it. You look at that structure, the way it is today, it's big. And we're talking about making it bigger. So what I'd like to do now is, Chairperson Broderick, could you put, could somebody put this picture up on the screen, please?
I think it should pick it up. There you go.
I'm assuming those aren't your skid marks from Sunday.
They're not.
Right? That happened on Sunday. And, I don't know, it's a, we have a really nice neighborhood. I'm proud of how well everybody takes care of the neighborhood. I don't want a plastic sandwich sign at the entrance of my neighborhood. It's not a commercial area. Okay, you can turn that overhead off now. All right, so, starting at that corner, going up the hill, the first thing you encounter is a blind intersection, and that's at the circle, Innsbrook Circle. Continuing up from there, you encounter a pathway, a formal pathway, to a park that is right in our neighborhood, right behind Byerly's. Going, continuing up, you turn onto Plymouth and start over the crest of a hill. And at the bottom of that crest of the hill is where the church is proposing to create a walkway to the new parking lot. That, to me, is a very big safety issue. And let me just read some numbers to you. Please bear with me. 11, 7, 8, 8, 7, 6, 17, 13, 5, 14, 7, 4, 2, 2, 15, 8, 4, 2, 16, 12, 7, 4. Those are the ages of the children that live on Innsbrook Lane proper. There's 23 children. There are another 30 that live on Geneva. Those kids cross Innsbrook to go to the park. And there are another, at least I know of, another 27 grandchildren, just with two families. So you can imagine what this neighborhood's like. Street hockey, balls bouncing out into the road. This is a neighborhood, and it's not a place for a megachurch or an auditorium that seats 1,700 people and drives traffic through that kind of a neighborhood. That is an accident waiting to happen. So the traffic coming through the neighborhood of cars is not the only traffic that you're, you may not be aware of. One of the other reasons why there is a police presence in the parking lot at Breen is because it's been burglarized. So it's drawing attention to the wrong element and bringing people into our neighborhood that wouldn't otherwise be there. And adding additional parking, especially in what we know as the woods, is only going to be harder to monitor. Now, in addition to the traffic, it's not always on Sundays, by the way. It's pretty constant, and you can imagine, if you had an auditorium, you'd want to fill it too, right? And make it a busy place. So there's lighting that's involved. These new parking lots will need additional lighting, and that's going to, I mean, create, call it light pollution, call it what you will, it's going to affect the lighting in our neighborhood. And then there's the plowing noise, which is probably pretty timely today. But we hear the snow plows all the time. Now, if I moved in next to a mall, I would expect that. But this looks like a mall parking lot to me. So I'm really 100% against this addition. I think it is just, it's a good church. I'm not, I don't have any issues with the church. Well, I shouldn't say that. They haven't kept their current agreement with us. But it's the wrong type of building to build in a residential R1 neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. I want to thank everyone for their time this evening. I appreciate everyone's comments, and I appreciate everyone's cordialness, because I thought it went very well. I did close the public hearing. There will be, just from an administrative piece, I will give the commissioners a chance to ask any additional questions to staff. And I think Deb may talk a little bit about the procedures, the next step, but she's covered that once. There'll be additional time with the building committee at Breen. Many of us will probably ask for certain things to be brought back to us, and then we'll go through the process. We do have legal responsibilities from a standpoint of how we notify and post for meetings, and we follow a state statute as to how that's done. Commissioners, at this point, I would like to have you ask staff any additional questions or requests of staff as we move forward. Commissioner Benke?
Come on.
I have a couple of questions.
Commissioner Workman, I'm sorry.
I just want to reiterate a couple of things. Deb, we are, or there is going to be an additional traffic study done at the city?
There is a traffic study that has been done, and our consultant engineers have been working on that. I believe what we have at this point is still a draft, so there will be, I think, some finalization of that. The city won't be doing a separate traffic study.
Sir, what is the draft?
Let Mr. Hillgardner address that.
Mr. Workman, I can comment to that. There was a traffic study completed by the applicant. Initially, that study just kind of took a snapshot in time. One of the requests that we made was to actually look at that upon, you know, a future date, 20 years down the road, 30 years down the road. So they did modify the study to show some future growth. They've also agreed as a condition that would move forward with a part of this potential approval to evaluate that upon opening and say, and evaluate that traffic model again. Again, as a part of the city, we've just reviewed the model, looked at the numbers. We didn't go out and do the traffic counts ourselves. Obviously, it's a professional consulting firm that was hired by Breen, that's very reputable in their traffic modeling and traffic studies. So there's no reason for the city to believe that the data is not accurate. And at this point, you know, like I said, we've just done a review. And this just speaks to the review that we've done, you know, we're basically analyzing traffic that looks like it's going to increase because of this addition. It sounds to me like there's quite a few concerns with traffic, as is with the road, in addition to just Breen. And I think, again, as a consultant to the city, I think the city engineer is probably going to have to weigh in on some of the stuff of the existing current road network there, which we definitely will, we'll have him get involved in that.
Thanks, Brian. I appreciate your input.
I think that's all I have.
Should I come back to you?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, other questions? Oh, you, Commissioner Benke?
Deb, I presume that when the study is no longer a draft, that the commission would get it as well?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct.
The amount of parking, the current work the city is doing for parking, knowing that we've also looked at excess of parking in other areas, is that totally being represented in what we're being shown currently? Or is this sort of where the city wants this future building to have?
At this point, this is what the applicant has submitted. It does not include our analysis of what the ordinance requires and the particulars.
Once again, I guess I'm concerned where the preliminary plat is only, it's combining it only into two lots still, instead of three, where, you know, right now it's three lots. We're putting it into two, but it's one piece. And again, we're sort of plating things presumably so that they could do something in the future. The parking lot could be subdivided off later, it could be sold, it could have another use. By not incorporating it all into one plat, is there any rationale that the city's been given as to why they haven't incorporated it into one plat?
Well, actually, because it's divided by a public street, so that's...
That's the...
Yeah, it's an existing condition.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that road, I presume, was put in at the recommendation of the city to have access for Innsbrook Woods?
That I would have to, yeah, we'll have to research that. This was done well before the 12 years ago I was here, so.
Yeah, it doesn't have another, it's only a single, it's only a single access off of South Cross without that. I presume that the city is really trying to encourage the traffic within the parking lot to go a different way than what's currently being shown. I sort of got that from the tone of the background.
Yeah, Commissioner, there was, as a part of the traffic study that was done, there was ample language within the report stating that there will be traffic personnel, not necessarily city police staff. That was one of the concerns, is that, you know, the city police force may not be able to staff that in the future. But there was essentially, again, a condition that would go along with this, that they would have ample people directing traffic. And I think, again, at the next public hearing, I believe the applicant will be able to speak to that, but I can tell you that I know there is plans in place to have, even in addition to what's there right now, for directing traffic in and out of the site.
Yeah, I guess I was referring more to changes of flow. I know some of this stuff is going to come from that final report and come from the additional discussion. I'm just seeing a real problem with how it's laid out personally. I think the bulk of the rest is going to wait for additional information.
Deb, I think a lot of it will come with a full set of background for us, I think. The full information on the traffic study and, we have had recently some options. I think we had it with the Monopole for both Burnsville Toyota and for North Oaks, where some pictures were taken and then some drawings were done for us that showed visually how tall something would be.
Yes.
I don't know if that's possible. I would be interested in seeing some of that. That's kind of new for us for a background. And then I am interested in, as we normally get all of the background that helps us with making decisions as to the history. It is odd, it seems odd to me that it still meets and bounds with the addition that was done in 2000. So anyway, that's, Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm the chair, first of all. I would like to join with you in thanking the people from the neighborhood that came out tonight and either support the application or, to some degree, oppose the application. You know, I support places of worship in any community. I'll take a place of worship in a community over the alternative any day. And it's very clear, I mean, I live near to Breen, not too far, in 42. And I know what they have done. I have been associated with Breen when I was working, so their school with Breen had to report to me. So I went in there and I see, I didn't know what they have done, and I heard tonight testimony from people who attend Breen of what they do. Listening to people tonight, I think some things that came out loud and clear is traffic, The church was built with a conditional use permit in an R1 neighborhood. When you build a church or a business in an R1 neighborhood on a C, a conditional use permit, there are limitations that have to be taken into account. First and foremost is a residential area. And I heard the concern of people from that area about the traffic, and somebody mentioned about widening the street, right? The project is already butting up to people's property. Widening the street means you're going to take away people's property to widen the street. I don't know if that's a feasible, something that can be done. But my concern right now is, how much can we do in a R1 neighborhood? I mean, I support places of worship, but I don't know. I would hope at the end of this hour that the city and the applicant and the community can come together and find a solution that would be a win-win, as somebody said. And, you know, together we can make that community a place that we want to live, as well as a place we want to worship. So I'm open at this point. I hope with the next meeting, when we have all the information from staff, and if we also have more testimony, Mr. Chair, that we'll be able to work something out. And I'm not suggesting that Breen move out of Burnsville. Breen is a fixture in Burnsville and is a place that people can go to and worship and socialize and all the other services they provide. So I'm hoping that we can all have an open mind and work together to make it a win-win for all, Mr. Chair. So I'll wait until the other meeting with the more background, detailed background information to see what we can do about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your words, Commissioner Singh. Commissioners, other questions?
Chair, two more quick questions that I resolved in my head. Deb, the proposal is asking for an additional driveway, and that, I apologize if I missed that. The proposal for that is if the parking were to extend south, we're not across Plymouth, but south, parallel.
Yeah, there are two. There's a driveway to the new parking lot, and then there's also a driveway at this location, and there's existing driveways, whoops, on the site as well. That's standard, and again, for the planning commission, you're aware of this, for the residents, probably not, but typically, again, the R1 standards are set up for a single-family home and lot, and that's where the three, you know, we have a maximum of three driveways. When you're looking at a church, all we have to do is, again, evaluate the conditional use permit, but the standards and the ordinance may or may not, you know, really be applicable to this, but we have to include that, and that's what the conditional use permit variance and plat do. But we have to include that, and that's what the conditional use permit variants and plat do.
Have they, they've met their proof of parking as it sits today? With the amount of activity there and the spaces provided, they've already met that as it sits today?
For their, in the 2000 plan, actually, they provided more parking spaces than the ordinance required at that point in time. And so I'm not aware of any other, you know, construction or change of uses and those types of things. So, yeah, at this point, they are in compliance with the existing parking. All of the issues that we're discussing are associated with the expansion.
So with that expansion comes the need for more proof of parking?
Yes, for more parking, yes.
Because they would not be meeting that standard if the expansion were to move forward?
They are going to have less numbers of spaces than what the ordinance will call for. Again, because the ordinance calls for the maximum occupancy load of the gymnasium of each of the two auditoriums of the, yeah, I can't think of the other. Yeah, and the classrooms, et cetera. So when you take all of those numbers and apply them, there's going to be a larger number of parking spaces required than what they're showing. And again, that's why they are making application for the conditional use permit. And what we need to evaluate is, is it reasonable to go with what they're showing? Is it reasonable to have lesser or more? And that's all related to what will come out in the parking study.
And in the past, we've asked for proof of parking to say that if we've gotten to this threshold, then we need to have an option available for additional parking if that threshold is met or exceeded. Is that satellite parking lot across Plymouth, one of those scenarios where this is, we have it on paper, so if we get there, this is where we can go? Or is the parking lot across Plymouth in conjunction with the auditorium as far as building date and execution of that?
The applicant is saying that they need that, they need at minimum that parking lot. What they have talked about in some of the discussions is, you know, one of the issues that came up was crossing Plymouth Avenue and the safety of that. One of their suggestions is that this parking lot be used just for their volunteers and their regular staff that attend these meetings and provide. And they already have enough folks where they need that parking lot to accommodate that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Commissioner Benke, you have another question?
Deb, as long as we have that here. When you're talking about six driveways, you're looking at the new one on Plymouth, the two above it, not the one across the street, just, or are you counting the one across the street too?
They're having the, I included that because, yeah, just to make sure that we were covered, because you can only have three. Three is all you can have. So depending on, I don't know if this is the final layout that's going to be coming for you. Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that that is covered.
And I was trying to understand where the count came from. So right now, we're saying that even the one across the street is part of the six. Okay. Since we were asked to give staff a little direction, I would, I would think that there should be a solution available here that minimizes numbers of driveways. In other words, doesn't even allow the current five. It seems to me that the traffic is better controlled with less openings. Thank you.
Commissioner Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Along the same lines, I was involved in the expansion of my religious institution in Minneapolis. We instituted shuttle buses from off-site parking for those times of the year when there were going to be large numbers of people. And that has worked out very well. Just a suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, other comments? Deb, I appreciate all your work. I know this has been kind of a long process. And I know we have a little bit of work ahead of us. But I do want to thank everybody for coming this evening. Unless, I don't think I've heard the commissioners differently. At this point, the staff's recommendation is to table this. And so at this point, I would, unless I hear otherwise, I would entertain a motion to table it. I have a, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to make the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Benke has moved that we table the application. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Walter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries five zero. So, once again, thank you for everyone's time this evening. And the process will follow our normal city process. I think Deb has one.
Yeah, what I'd like to state for the residents and for everyone involved, the city is required by state law to process applications within a certain timeframe. That timeframe is by March 20th. So we don't have time to just continue and continue and continue a project. The state law is that a decision either to approve or deny needs to be made within the timeframe in the statute or it's deemed approved. So we do have to monitor that. The church has indicated that they would like to hold a neighborhood meeting next week on the 17th at the church, starting at 6 o'clock. And the purpose of that meeting will be to have the transportation folks there that were not at our last meeting, so that questions can be raised and talked to with the folks that are knowledgeable of that. And then as far as notification procedures, we will use the information provided this evening. In addition to the required notification is we need to send notices to people within 350 feet of the perimeter of the property that the church owns. So that's who we are required to send written notice to. We are also required to publish the public hearing in the local newspaper. We do it twice, once at least 10 days before the public hearing, so that's another alternative. There are a couple of things. We can certainly send out for the neighborhood meeting additional letters, but that's something that is above and beyond. And I don't know where a neighborhood begins and ends. We talk about south of South Cross and whatnot. So we'll do the best that we can to let people know. But definitely, you know, if you would also let your neighbors know, et cetera, that would be very helpful. We can have started with all of the folks that have contacted me so far an email list, you know, that we can send information out to as well. But just wanted to let you know what the status is. As far as the process, the item has been tabled, so it's at an end. What we will need to do is to publish again the hearing notice for the next, you know, when the planning commission meeting will be and send out the notices, written notices on those cards to people within 350 feet. And we'll do the best that we can to keep people informed. And if you have questions or would want to, if you didn't actually sign in but want to receive information on this, you can also contact me. And I'll make sure to add you to the email list as well. So we'll try to keep information flowing as openly as we can with everybody who's interested. Thank you.
So the last thing I would like, we do have two other additional items on our agenda this evening. So I would appreciate if we could, either you can stay, they're pretty exciting items, or if we could continue the conversation in the lobby as quickly as we can so we can move on to our two additional items. Thank you very much. I would like to, see if I can move ahead. All right. Our next item on our agenda this evening is item number five, which is the discussion of the 2017 Planning Commission Work Plan and City Council Ends and Outcomes. Ms. Garros, you're already at the podium, you can.
At the podium. I didn't get my steps in today, but I got my standing in.
You, you have the floor.
Yes. We have annually, each of the commissions prepares a work plan for special studies and things that are of interest to the commissions that you would like to look into further, study further. It can be anything from, you know, an ordinance change or amendment. It can be, while we don't address, you know, this situation and that's come up in the past, we'd like to look into that a little bit further and then to actually prepare a draft work plan for what you would like to work on for next year. In addition to that, and I don't really know if this information has been provided to the commission in the past, but in addition to that, and it's described in the report, the city council does adopt ends and outcomes every year at their all-day work session. And they don't tend to change a lot over time, but they do change if there are new initiatives that the council wants. And what the council would also like your input on is through the ends and outcomes, if there are other things that are not represented that you think should be looked at by the council. If something, if you don't think something is relevant, they really are looking for feedback also on their ends and outcomes and will consider that at their all-day work session as well.
Commissioners, questions for Ms. Garros?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chair. I was waiting for your approval.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Workman.
Thank you. Deb, I was scrolling through here, but was there anything on here about neighborhood signs, legacy signs, signs for businesses? Do we have a sign ordinance?
Any sign ordinance?
Yes.
Maybe if I can speak to that.
Regina's been on top of that.
Legacy event signs were reviewed last year and it was an interim ordinance where council approved it for one year. So it is on our work plan to readdress that, to check back in with the existing legacy events organizers as well as city staff, county staff, to see if changes should be made and what those recommendations might be. So we'll definitely revisit that. I have reached out most recently to the Fire Mustard Group and I'm trying to coordinate a meeting with them. So it is something that we'll be working on and working towards very shortly.
One thing that popped in my head when I was reading this, I was with number four for standards for monument signs, that I, if we have an opportunity to open this up a little bit is if there was any consideration, if there could be any consideration to signs that label neighborhoods. The one that comes to mind is there's a sign in North River Hills. That's kind of an old brick wall with some black rebar that says North River Hills on it. If there would be any interest in looking into maybe cleaning some of those up around the city. That's just a personal thing that I had some interest in. And then the other one was if we are going to address the 25% metal threshold in 2017 that I think we attempted in a work session. And I don't know if that got passed a conversation, but if that's something that we could look at this year as well.
Commissioners, for that, we have the, we provided to you kind of the status of where your 2016 work plan items were. And I identified those. I think those start on page, actually, the bottom of page one and then on to page two. So we have the status of those. And then also, in addition to that, starting on page two, we've got a number of items listed A, B, C through I. And those are items that have either been discussed or brought up by other commissioners that we can include. And we did include on that architectural, both looking at architectural metal panels and then I believe the, let's see, looking at like just, I think, metal as an architectural material in single family. I know that Commissioner Benke and I have talked about that in the past. Should there be, you know, right now, there's no metal without a conditional use permit. What about somebody who wants to put a bay or bow window on and have copper or something? You know, should they be able to do that? So really, for the work plan, it's totally open as to what you as the commission want to address. We're here to take the notes and to put together what you would like to do. And then that'll be presented by our chair to the city council.
Okay.
Commissioner Singh.
Chair, I think if we look at A through H, it will give us a good idea of what we need to work on this year. The legacy one, we can add to this because it will come up, right, after the year is up. So that will be in 2017. We can add that to the list.
Can I ask a question there?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Regina, since it's a one-year ordinance, will the review just be with the city council or will it ask to go back in front of us? How does that work? This is new. I don't think we've done a one-year.
We did, we did, the architectural guidelines, which I like to bring up too.
It comes back here.
It'll come back here.
Typically, ordinance changes, well, likely what will happen is we'll check in again with the city council, likely at a work session, but it may go back to planning commission and then city council for ordinance adoption, is what I'm thinking. We can certainly take a closer look at that.
So since it's already planned, does it need to be on this, however you want to do it? If it's already on the schedule, does it need to be on the work plan?
If it's, it's really up to you. It's what you would like to do. So what we have done in the past is if there's something that didn't get done, we just moved it to the next work plan. But if it's not relevant anymore, you don't have to.
Typically, there's a give and take between us and staff with how much time you have and what you can, what we can get done in a year.
So it's really, it's really up to you what you'd like to do. And I'm just here to take the notes so we can put it together for you.
The ordinance is written that says it's to be reviewed after one year. That means, I understand it, that it must be reviewed not only by the city council, also by the planning commission. We will make a recommendation, if there are changes, minor or what, to the city council that, okay, it's okay, or we recommend the following changes.
Yeah, I, my concern was if something's, you know, where does the work plan end and what's, because we have stuff that shows up, but if it's appropriate to be on the work plan, I think since it's already going to happen.
Yeah, it will happen.
Yeah, so.
To satisfy the ordinance.
Yep. Any other questions, Commissioner Singh?
No.
Commissioner Benke.
Yeah, I guess looking through the items that are on here, you know, F and H, I think are pretty much, we definitely should. I mean, it's good to see that the D, performance standards for the R1 zone, you know, that's already on the list of stuff that we're doing. I guess to go back to that comment though about what happens after a year, I expected the architectural guideline to come back here. And instead, it just went to council and now it seems to be gone. And I really, when I moved to prove it, the understanding that I had at the time was we would get it back here. We could analyze it, we could review it, see how we thought it was working and make those recommendations to the council. I did go to a council meeting, but there wasn't an opportunity to discuss it at the work session.
I think it all depends on how the city council adopts it or awards it. If they say, bring it back to us in a year for review, then it goes to work session first.
Sure.
And then if they say, yeah, you know, we want you to make changes or send it for study to the planning commission, we do so. That doesn't mean, however, that, you know, you can put it on yourself, on your own work plan that you want to go through and you think that there are changes or things that should be done.
Sure. And I guess that I would formally suggest that we add it mainly because I think there are elements of it that are very subjective and it's hard to understand what the subjective rationale behind it is, just in reading it. I also feel that it is less an architectural tool and more of a planning tool. So I think it's labeled incorrectly. And I think that some of the things that it's intended to do, I don't think it's, I think it's supposed to be intended to help the architecture of Burnsville. I don't see it right now. I also think it's a little cumbersome for staff to use. So I think, I wanted to sort of get it out for a year and see what kind of comment back and how it was going to be used.